A call to order the regular city council meeting. Can you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Can we begin with roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers, Dederman.
Here.
Seeley. Davis.
Here.
Obrin.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Kearns.
Councilmember Dederman.
Thank your honor. Approvement of regular city council and committee of the whole meetings of July 9th, 2024, and to be approved as published on July 23rd, 2024. I make a motion to, oh gosh, to accept this. I meant to approve the minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Okay, next item is, we have the oath of office for two firefighters. Chief?
Councilmember, city administrator, and your honor. As fire chief, it is my honor to present to you this evening Clinton Fire Department's newest recruits, Sam Haggason and Andrew Butt, for their oath. Sam Haggason grew up in Lake Mills, Iowa, and is a third-generation firefighter and the first to make it as a career. He's been Sam's dream, it has been Sam's dream for, to be a firefighter ever since he can remember. Sam comes to our department with a fire science degree from Iowa Central Community College. His firefighter one, firefighter two, and hazmat training already completed. Sam will be enrolled in the paramedic program this fall. We are excited to have Sam at the Clinton Fire Department, and he is excited to work with the city of Clinton. Today, Sam is joined by family members, and Scott Haggason, Sam's father, will be doing the pinning. Next, I present to you Andrew Butt. Andrew grew up in Comanche and graduated from Comanche High School. Andrew attended Clinton Community College to obtain his EMT certification and volunteers for the Comanche Fire Department and has enjoyed that experience. Andrew is excited to continue his EMS training as he's also enrolled in the paramedic program this fall. We're excited to have Andrew join the Clinton Fire Department. Today, Andrew is also joined by family members, and his father Jason Butt will be doing the pinning. Your honor, if you're ready, will you do the honor of administering their oaths?
All right, just raise your right hand and then repeat after me, okay? I, state your name.
I, Jason Butt.
Do you solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
To do my duty as a firefighter?
To do my duty as a firefighter.
For the Clinton Fire Department?
For the Clinton Fire Department.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
To serve my commanding officers?
To serve my commanding officers.
With respect and dignity?
With respect and dignity.
To serve the citizens of the city of Clinton?
To serve the citizens of the city of Clinton.
With compassion, courage, and integrity?
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
To preserve life and property?
To preserve life and property.
From the elements of fire disaster?
From the elements of fire disaster.
To faithfully execute the core values?
To faithfully execute the core values.
And mission of the Clinton Fire Department?
And mission of the Clinton Fire Department.
And to uphold the laws and constitutions?
And to uphold the laws and constitution.
Of the United States of America?
Of the United States of America.
The state of Iowa?
State of Iowa.
The city of Clinton?
City of Clinton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This will be, pin him?
Hey, Chief, real quick, if we get, if he can stay here good, sir, and get his family to come up, we'll get a group photo with the whole family. No smiling. Great day. All right, guys, thanks. Actually, I actually have a here. One, two, three, gotcha.
I'll fire fire boy. All right, how are you? You're looking good, buddy. Looking good. What happened there?
All right, three, two, one, no smiles.
Good, how are you? A little good.
You hungry, Pat? All right.
What's he love, bud?
Tootsie Rolls, that song probably. You know that song. All right, our next item is, we have a proclamation. Mr. Mangler, come on up to the podium for us, please.
No audience, that's great.
No audience.
I'm sure you practiced this multiple times, right? Do you need, do you need a copy?
I got it.
Got it?
He's ready.
All right.
Not really, but. It's just words, just words. Ready? Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I am Steve Mangler, Grand Knight of Council 707 from Clinton and Comanche. Whereas the city of Clinton pays tribute to many individuals, organizations, and activities throughout the year, and whereas the Knights of Columbus was established in 1882 by Father Michael J. McGivney in New Haven, Connecticut, the purpose was to bring aid and financial assistance to sick, disabled, or needy members and their families. And whereas Knights of Columbus Council 707 is associated with Prince of Peace Catholic and Church of the Visitation in Clinton and Comanche, and consists of a very active group of Catholic men who serve their community through multiple charity, charitable works, some of which include campaign for people with intellectual disabilities, the Tootsie Roll Drive, food collections for those in need, diaper drives for the Pregnancy Center, scholarships for local students, and whereas Council 707 was founded on October 12th, 1902, and has been serving the people in Clinton area ever since, and whereas, as an organization historically rooted in the community, Council 707 and the Knights of Columbus has served many individuals in Clinton and surrounding areas, all while keeping their founding principles of charity, unity, and fraternity. Whereas Council 707 will be conducting our annual CPID Tootsie Roll Drive on August 2nd, 3rd, and 4th at local grocery stores. We would be honored if you could proclaim that weekend as the official Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Weekend. Thank you.
All right, now therefore, I, Scott Madison, Mayor of the city of Clinton, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the August 2nd through 4th, 2024, as the annual Tootsie Roll Drive fundraiser in the city of Clinton, Iowa, and witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Clinton to be affixed this 23rd day of July, 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right. Moving to public hearings, we'll convene a public hearing concerning the 2024 lead hazard control and healthy home supplemental HUD application. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? If you're online, star six will unmute you. Any council members that would like to address the public hearing?
Just one little quick typo.
You saw it?
Yeah, I saw it like three or four times.
Yeah.
So hazard is with two A's, and in the, the title, you can see it says lead has, hazard. There needs to be an A in there, it's just, it's just a typo.
Okay, any other comments for the public hearing? Liz, did you have anything for the public hearing?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I am here, if you have any questions, the current grant that was awarded in 2020 is now in closeout phase, we're finishing up the last eight, ten properties, and then we'll be closing that grant out completely, then spending all those funds. This grant is due August 19th, so we need to keep going to give the funds ready to issue, and I don't see any reason why there wouldn't be a new award from HUD, we've done very well on the past few years. Coming, coming to another public hearing to give you all the kind of details of the grant, one of the next upcoming meetings, once I get them all put together a little bit more nicely, but maximum grant is five million, and I think we'll be, might be approaching that number, that figure. City, local match requirements are 10% of that, and I have had communications with the city of McHoguina, who has partnered in this the last two efforts, and they are interested in doing so, and they then pay a fee per house for everyone that we complete within the city of McHoguina, that goes towards that match as well.
Hey Liz, did you want to put you on the spot, but did you want to tell the folks how many houses were clear of lead under this last grant?
This last grant, we're, I'm just finishing up the quarterly report, and will be, I believe, at 73, as of the end of June, and we, like I said, depending on how things fall out, we've got a couple people walking, whether we're gonna be able to give the project done before closeout, and estimating another eight units, so that'll put us at, by my understanding, one unit, and we have proposed to do the six. So the next grant, I am proposing you can keep the unit count at about being six.
Awesome.
That seems to be a reasonable number.
All right, thank you, Liz. Is there any questions for Liz from anybody on the council?
Well, do we have to submit this actual resolution with the application? I mean, we will fix the spelling error, right?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Right, anything else for the public hearing? All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, honor. I have a resolution, retain East Central Intergovernmental Association, ECIA, to write the 2024 lead hazard control and healthy home supplement HUD, H U D, application, move that it be adopted as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers. Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Councilmember Seeley.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution, establish public hearing for the 2024 lead hazard control and healthy home supplemental HUD application commitment of matching funds, I move this be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers. Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
All right, thank you, Liz, for being here, and we'll see you next meeting at the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving to the audience comment section, I did not receive any yellow cards for audience comment, is there anybody from the, any citizens that would like to address the council right now, either in the room or online? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented on attachment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Oh, Councilmember Summers? Okay. Anything else for discussion on the consent agenda?
No, one of the, this review has reached out to me and he's very happy.
Awesome, it's a good program.
Yeah, for sure, and we're getting a lot done.
All right, any other discussion on consent agenda? All right, can we have roll call on the balance of the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Councilmember Seeley.
Thank your honor, I move to receive approval and place on file claims listings one, two, and three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the claims listing? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Councilmember Obrin.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution appointing Eric Entwistle as the IT supervisor for the city of Clinton, Iowa, I move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Eric and his wife Jerry are in the crowd remaining after everybody left.
Do you want to come up and say anything, Eric?
Um, I'll come talk to you all after, it's a pleasure to be there, everyone has put names and faces of people I see online.
Oh, you've been watching us. Good, good to know. Anything else? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Congrats, Eric, welcome aboard.
Love you, Eric.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, honor, I have a resolution authorizing application for an EPA Brownsfield Community Wide Assessment Grant, EPA Brownsfield Cleanup Grant, and entering into an agreement with East Central Intergovernmental Association for Grant Application Preparation, I move that to be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yeah.
Kearns.
Councilmember Summers.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution approving and authorizing an agreement with SCS engineers for a Class II sewage sludge disposal plan for the disposal at Clinton County landfill. I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You want to tell us what that is?
I'll be more than happy to.
You know a lot of, no, we're good.
This is a, first of all, the engineering group is fairly new to the landfill out there. They're very good, but, you know, God rest his soul, Bob has been wanting to double up the amount of sewage sludge going out there, and that is something that's actually regulated by the DNR. We've already maxed out what we can take out there. There's actually a lot of positive things that are going to come from this. So with this proposal going through, SCS is going to develop a program, which we don't currently have out there, and I say we, because I'm on the board out there as well, to where one, DNR will resubmit, well, we're going to request DNR double the amount that we can take out there, so we can finish the ADM expansion, or, or start it, I should say, and that's the biggest part of it, is clearing ground and ways for the ADM expansion, and there's a lot of sludge that we got to get rid of. So that would be the number one part, the other, two-part on this is, there is no program, this is probably a decade or two late, in my perspective, and SCS engineers, who I've been working with closely, as well as Bob and Matt, all are in agreement that if we get this done, it helps us, and I can go into the scientific part, which I will do later, to apply the sludge out there where it minimizes the PFOS, which is not a good thing for our community to have floating around, no pun intended, but it also helps us to eliminate the situation where, we've run into several times, where the application is not correctly being applied, and it does create a problem the way it is being done currently for our contractor out there, that's using excavators and other equipment to move this stuff around. So we're eliminating a lot of problems, not to mention the fact that one, that would bring us into compliance when we double it, and two, it'll make things a lot safer all the way across the board. So SCS engineers has been outstanding to work with out there, and they're eager to help us get this done, and it will help our expansion progress. We're actually behind schedule on our part because of this, helping the expansion out at the ADM plant. Did that summarize it?
It's taking our sludge to the landfill?
We are the only, we're the only community that takes sludge out to the landfill, so that's why it fell on us to double the amount going out to the landfill.
And this is why Bill and I and Bob, this has been spending a lot of time together over the last several months, because this is a big deal, and.
It is a big deal.
What, what's interesting is, Bob pushed this from the get-go, and what's going to happen, though, is, once we get through October, then it becomes powder.
Yeah.
And so then it's a whole different thing that we can probably go sell, but we, part of the issue was, the, the way they were putting it in would make almost like a waterbed, because they were sticking it on the same area instead of spreading it out, so that SCS came in, basically said, hey, do these options this way.
We, I've had a lot of discussions, we're meeting about two or three times a month out there, for anybody that would like to come and talk about PFOS and poop, but to go to the next level, which we need to do, we should have done, and to also help clear out the ground for the expansion, this is, this is the only way we can do it, because we do need DND and R to give formal approval, so.
That was where my question was going to go, do we have any concerns?
No, we do not.
They were, they've been synced with them the whole time.
So as long as this engineering firm sticks around and.
They're not going anywhere, they're under contract for other stuff out there, too. But now, it's, I've been, I've been out there for two different engineering firms, I've been really impressed with the company that's out there right now, and they've actually worked very well, they've been in contact with, through Matt and through Bob, myself, obviously, and we've met several times over a lot of different things out there. Hopefully in October, I can give an update with everything that's going on out there, we've got a lot of things, it's amazing what you can learn about trash, I can, that's all I'll say, it's amazing what you can learn about trash, it's kind of exciting, but we got good things going on out there.
All right, any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Councilmember Kearns.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution appointing UMB Bank, N.A. of West Des Moines, Iowa, to serve as paying agent, note register, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and note register and transfer agent agreement, and authorizing the execution of the agreement, I move it to be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Councilmember Dederman.
Thank your honor, a resolution approving and authorizing a form of a loan agreement and authorizing and providing for the insurance of $9,785,000 general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2024A, and levying a tax to pay said notes, approval of the tax exemption certificate, and continuing to closure certificate, move that to be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Councilmember Kearns.
Thank your honor, I have an ordinance for the first consideration.
Please read the title.
An ordinance repealing ordinance numbers 2260 and 2492, providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the Clinton Business Park Urban Renewal Plan area in the city of Clinton, Iowa, pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa, termination of the Clinton Business Park Urban Renewal Plan area.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Just one little thing, every time we, we bring this up, we might want to give some background information, because people might not be up to speed that are listening, so, you know, like, we know that the urban renewal park, we're technically eliminating it to create a new one, and I, and I think people want to make sure, you know, because there are some people saying, well, you're eliminating the business park, no, we're not, you know, and it's something that you just kind of keep as a side note anytime this comes up.
And it's not always a standard action, typically when an urban renewal area expires, it's done, but we thought, working with Grove Clinton, this would be good to go back, and so it's going to basically, as we said before, be a little bit bigger space, there's going to be some more acres added in, but the things that are already developed will be blacked out, if you will, so those won't be able to get tax increment finance, so it'll be the areas that they build up around, so.
But it'll be only for new businesses.
Exactly, yep.
All right, any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Councilmember Summers.
Thank your honor, I have ordinance for the second consideration.
Please read the title.
An ordinance emitting Chapter 72.01 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Clinton, Iowa, concerning traffic offenses.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Councilmember Kearns, she has some?
Okay, go ahead. So, I guess, first, is the point of this to keep cases out of court, is it to make our police officers' jobs a little easier? What is the point of this ordinance?
It's not to keep any cases out of court at all, it won't change the number of cases. What it'll do is, if we write on the city code instead of the state code, we're making it clear that those are municipal infraction tickets rather than simple misdemeanors. It's bringing it in line with the rest of the move that we've had for quite some time to try to eliminate simple misdemeanors under our code. There's plenty of simple misdemeanors we can charge under 321 if we want to for traffic, and our officers still retain that right, so if somebody is going 15 over and it's unsafe, they can, anytime they want to, they can write under 321. They can, they've always retained the right to do that, but what we were getting, running into, is when they were writing on the city code, they were treating, treating them exactly like simple misdemeanors, which means these people were demanding jury trials, the court was imposing a beyond a reasonable doubt standard of proof and everything else, which of course runs up the city's prosecution costs to have to deal with all that, so there, you know, and Chief Gerian retains the right to instruct his staff any way he wants to, he can say, you, you officers, just keep writing on 321 if you think this person's a, a traffic safety hazard, if they're going too fast, if they're, obviously if they're. If they're going too fast, if they're, obviously if they're passing a school bus, if they're driving recklessly, if they're a repeat offender and have a lengthy, you know, bad driving record, and there needs to be a report to DOT, it needs to be criminal in nature. Just like any of us driving down the highway, we get a Chapter 321 ticket if we're out on the interstate, right? We can always do that in the city of Clinton. But what this is saying is if we write on our code, Chapter 72, right, and say in our code, those will be municipal infractions from now on. And that's making it clear to the judges that they're municipal infractions. So I did see an email from a citizen saying, this is a disaster, you know, why shouldn't these people get bad paper on their driving records and things if we write? That's not saying that that's not going to happen to people. The police always have the option of putting that on your driving record if they want to. But if they write on city code, which our officers often do, we don't want to get bogged down in a bunch of expensive jury trials on what is really just a minor offense, right? So that's what this is for. It's just to, because right now, we made, we got rid of all of our simple misdemeanors under municipal, the municipal infraction section in the code. But when we ported over 321 to the code, we really didn't change that, make that clear that we wanted those to be municipal infractions. So that's what we're doing. So if the concern is, well, you know, the city of Clinton residents are going to get a free ride on their driving record, that's not really the case. They may or they may not. They may get an easier time on their driving record if it's a minor offense. But if it's a serious offense, and officers keep seeing these same people breaking the law all the time, they're just going to write on 321 and Mike Wolf's going to prosecute those.
So, so I saw that, you know, hitting a parked car was one of them that they could write. If something like that happens and they take the civil route, then will a police report so accompany that?
Yeah, it's not going to change the way we report. And I'm sorry, City Council Mayor Kevin Jerian, Police Chief, in case you don't recognize me. Yeah, and I have no problem with this, with instituting this program. If we, I can show you a policy that we'll write, we'll back it up with a policy that states exactly what we write. But I like to reserve and give the officers discretion on writing state or city charges, because it's just, it's easier many times and it's a discretionary issue at the traffic stop. But if we're uncomfortable when it's written and when it's not written, I have no problem doing a policy and laying it out, you know, this will, this will always be a city charge or this will always be discretionary charge, or this will never be a city charge. I have no issue with that, just to put it, make it more explainable, but.
I think that's a good idea. Because I did reach out to an insurance agent and a big one in town, and he said as long as there's a police report, he doesn't really care. Will each driver be researched prior to, like, we find out this guy's got, you know, 15 tickets for speeding in a school zone? Are you
We always run their names in a traffic accident or citation situation.
So if it's not an accident, it's just speeding?
We'll still, we'll still show that he's been stopped. We've had contact with him 10 times or whatever, and he's been issued citations. There's still shows on the record.
So you can see, you can see a pattern.
We'll see a pattern, yes.
Even if it's a civil and not, what is the other one called?
Municipal. State, state charged.
Yeah, so the sequence of events is officer makes the stop, officer runs the license, officer determines who this individual is, and then he can make that, he or she makes that decision at that point. Is this, am I just going to write this on the city code? Or do I really need to make this a 321 violation? They'll have that option. And if the chief does a policy, they're going to have general guidance on, you know, when they should do that and when they should just leave it on the city code.
I saw the email too, and I agree with, if there's policy, written policy, there'll be no ambiguity there. You all know, like, for sure this can't be written, city will not be written city. There's instances where we will not have discretion, we'll take discretion away from the officer, because if there are multiple offenders, multiple, you know, whatever, if we have a record of them violating the law many times, we will not give them the city code. The whole genesis for this was to take away, earn more of the municipal infractions and violations for the city as opposed to the state. When I got here, like, 80% of the violations and the fines were going to the state or the county, and we were getting none of them, so.
Right, and I mean, I do understand that. But like, if, let's just say I'm driving through Leclaire and I get on their speed camera. I know people that have just thrown that away, so.
That's municipal, yes.
So are we going to allow these infractions to be written on out-of-state drivers? I mean, I think that
Well, that'd be part of the procedure. If an out-of-state driver gets pulled over and for a violation is cited, they would not be eligible for a city charge, because we know we can't get that. Yeah, that'd be one of the policy things, we can't write out-of-state for that. We can even make it out of city, you know, whatever, however we want to do that.
Yeah, we've got out of here all day, but we don't want to include that.
Right, but that's the policy thing that we'll tighten up a little bit after you guys pass this certain
You know, the thing about this is nobody's going to jail on these city tickets. But because there's been an adjudication in court, if somebody doesn't show up for a city ticket, then we have, we already have in place Iowa offset, right? So at the end of the quarter or whatever, if, we're not getting revenue from some of these tickets because they don't check to pay them, they're going to go to Iowa offset because we have judgments in our application to Iowa offset now. So if we wanted, if we had, let's say we had 100 unpaid city tickets, those could all go to Iowa offset. So somebody gets a tax return, they're going to say, oh geez, look at this, they took $100 out of here because I didn't pay my tickets. So it's, you know, it's not like there's no enforcement if it's a municipal ticket. Because, just because it's noncriminal doesn't mean there aren't any consequences. A lot of these people are going to end up paying one way or the other, whether they come down to the courthouse and pay it because Judge Wright tells them they have to, or whether they get it, we get it on the backend when they get their tax return, so.
So, I'm just asking, I'm
So who's going to, where, I, I, Cody get pulled over going 10 over, I get a
State violation.
A city ticket, where am I going to
We don't want to be seen as doing any favors for councils. Just getting the 321 right away.
Where do I go pay it then?
Clerk of Court.
You still, you don't come to the city, you still, even if it's a city violation?
These all get paid through the clerk of court anyway, and then we get it back through the clerk of court, so.
Okay, so they still handle, so then who is going to keep track of what's gotten paid and what's not?
Anita. She'll know.
He doesn't have nothing to do anyway.
Clerk of Court puts against somebody's driver's license.
Oh, they do? Okay.
But that's not municipal. I mean, that's a, that's a state charge.
The question about what DOT does with a state, with a city charge, I don't know.
Right.
Right, whether that's going to be on their, you know, I
But as far as collecting the fines for municipal charges, that's probably going to fall to your department.
Well, we know, I mean, people go to the courthouse to pay them, we never get a listing of where to be unpaid ones.
So that, I'm, yeah, so how
But we could see if that was available to us and then we could put it out
Do an audit.
Okay. Okay. And then, so can, it'll go, okay, let's say Iowa offset doesn't work. What's the next step to get money?
It's the same thing that happens in any case where somebody, either, you'd have to institute collection proceedings or something, which we may or may not do for some people. You know, if some people are literally living in one of our dilapidated buildings and they're using drugs, we may not ever get that.
Yeah.
I mean, but some people, you know, we may be able to collect if they have a bunch of them. You know, there's already a judgment that says you owe the city of Clinton this amount of money. So we've already got that judgment, so the same collection procedures that would happen in any case would apply.
Okay. Will this save the city money?
It would save the city money in cases where, like, for example, we've had instances before where they demand a jury trial. And that is an expensive proposition, because now you got to go have an attorney, prepare for that, build a city. One of our attorneys has got to show up or do the jury trial, pick the jury. It takes three quarters of a day to have this little minor traffic, you know, you don't want that
Yeah.
On these minor offenses.
Yep.
Right? So that's, that's where we would save money.
Is there a situation where this could end up costing us more?
No.
No, okay.
No, it would not.
All right, and are there other cities that are doing this in Iowa?
I don't know any for sure, but I believe the general trend is away from using city codes for simple misdemeanors.
Okay.
It just, it doesn't make any sense really to do it that, to do that, because you always can write a simple misdemeanor if you want.
Yep.
Every part of 321 is technically a simple misdemeanor. I mean, technically you can go to jail for speeding, right? You never get that, because they're usually, you're usually at a level where it's a scheduled violation. Nobody ever goes to jail for that.
Mm-hmm.
But if you're 20 over or something like that, you can go to jail for that.
Okay.
I mean, so 321 is technically a simple misdemeanor, which is why if somebody ever runs you for a job or anything, they're going to see your speeding tickets, right?
Okay.
Because those are all little simple misdemeanors that you had over the years. So what we're saying is these are not going to be that anymore if we write on the city code.
Okay.
But it doesn't mean that they can't get all of those tickets on the state code whenever officers, whatever policy we do.
Okay. I think I got a much clearer understanding, so that's good. But I don't particularly see a reason to do both readings tonight.
No, there's no reason to do, to accelerate.
Thank you.
No more questions?
Anything else? Any other discussion from council?
Thanks, Chief.
Okay. All right, can we have roll call on the second reading?
Councilmember Summers, Dederman, Seeley, Davis, Obrin, Musman, Kearns.
Okay, unfinished business, Councilmember Shemmers, 8M.
Going right back to it. Hang on one second. Yeah, Nextar actually contacted me and told me all about this. I just wanted to let the community know, our system is working. These are the people that were notified within 1,000 feet of our, which is the lines we drew, the notifications we drew, and everything else. So the system is working and that's what we intended it to do. So I'm only pulling this out for information. I mean, there's nothing
And if you have nothing to do on Thursday at 6:00 P.M.
Yep.
Over at Command, you can go to the Command Community Center for information.
And I would encourage anybody that's interested to go, so. Otherwise, I move to accept this and pass it on.
Okay, if we have a motion and a second, any other discussion on 8M here?
Right here, Cody.
All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers, Dederman, Seeley, Davis, Obrin, Musman, Kearns.
Councilmember Obrin?
Thank you, Honored.